All right, good morning, everyone. It is January the seventh of two thousand and twenty five. Madison County Commissioners Meeting. I am Tony Sinigus. If everybody will please introduce themselves.
Brandon Shea.
Chris Wallace.
Rob Solomon, County Commissioner.
David Kellman.
Nick Atkins, Prosecutor.
Brian Duvall.
Ron DeMiro, Assistant Clerk.
Amy Reese, Clerk.
Good morning, you. I would like to welcome Mr. Shea as our new Commissioner. And now, if you would like to lead the pledge of allegiance for us, please do.
Let's officially just signify, now the United States of America, and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, and with this all, with the Lord, in the highest court.
You did better than yourself, yeah, you weren't scared. All right, so have the minutes in the room for last week's meeting? Move to approve the minutes on the steps of the ready.
I mean, what changes?
She changed that question. All right, I'll second.
But first, in the second, is there any other discussion? Then please vote.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Doctor Sinigus.
Yes.
Doctor Wallace.
Yes.
Well, I want to thank the guys for being here. Enjoyed being the chairman last year. And I would like today to make a motion to have Mr. Chris Wallace as the Chairman for two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Please vote.
Mr. Shea. Doctor Sinigus. Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
You can let me know.
Since Sheriff's here, Nick, how are you, sir?
Good morning. I have a couple of quick things. First is just to let you know, we had an employee at the prosecutor's office that fell yesterday walking from municipal court over to prosecutor's office after a court. Well, I've already spoke to her, I spoke to her yesterday, spoke to her again this morning. She's okay, she's a little sore, but doesn't think she has any specific injuries. Nevertheless, she's going to fill out the POC form. The main reason I bring it up is prosecutor's office has kind of a history of individuals falling during winter, you know, going from the prosecutor's office to the courthouse. Just thinking back over the last eight, ten years, I bet it's probably pushing ten people, some more than once, that have fallen, two broke their ankles. So, yeah. And I think it's a combination of just not great paths from prosecutor's office to the courthouse. But the main courthouse is a little easier or the direct paths with the sidewalk, but not for the municipal court. And then also just the clothing issues. And that's where I'm going to write a dress report. Just want to put that out there. The other issue I have, I want to present to you, is a request for the allocation of the Frustrance Justice Fund for two thousand and twenty five in the amount of thirty eight thousand five hundred nine. So I have that request here. It does require a vote for you then. Right now, statutory, both the sheriff and the prosecutor has a Frustration Justice Fund. It's, the amount is set based on a percentage of the elected official's salary. It's a discretionary outside fund for the elected official to be able to expend those funds into Frustration Justice. It was originally set up decades ago to ensure that the prosecutor's office had funds to investigate other public officials if they suspected them of some kind of foul play, without having to rely on them to allocate funds to do so.
So the amount is statutory?
Yeah, well, it's a percentage of the salary.
We have a motion to excessive funds. So move.
Second.
First and second, any other discussion? Vote for please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Doctor Sinigus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Yeah, just to let you know, the FOJ funds from last year, I did not spend all of those. I have probably about five grand or so left. I'm finishing up the accounting and should have both the report to you next week as well as check.
What happens with this fund?
Go back to the checkup funds.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. County Attorney, how are you, sir?
Good morning and Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome to Mr. Shea.
Thank you.
For work with you. Take a moment to introduce a new member of our team, Kevin Weaver. He's a county engineer. Kevin comes to us from the city of Westerville. He's been at the county service department for ten years. He's seen his life, and he's moved out this way. Getting into the things he does at county engineer's office. So brings a lot of good, relevant experience to us. Next thing, snow ice control. First decent amount of snow that we've had in years. Very ranges of accumulation up here, anywhere four to ten. Ten were the per guest. We've had, we've had crews out since about thirty Sunday evening. Twenty-four hour deal. We have, we have two drivers per route. So we're able to get into a twenty-four hour situation pretty easily. Each driver working roughly a twelve-hour shift. We have nine frontline cloud trucks and that combination with fourteen tow trucks. Talk before the meeting, long-term forecast is below freezing. So we'll be dealing with blowing and drifting and some of the stick day for the force account feature. We'll be our best keeper of it, so it's special. Next thing, I do have a few resolutions to present to you. And these are our normal, the end of the year resolutions, nothing new. First one is my annual force count resolution. I think if you want to put these together next week, that's fine. And just for brevity, that would say, any work that, any construction work the county engineer does with his own forces, statute considers that a force account work. That needs to be authorized by the county commissioners. So every year, I have authorization from the board to proceed by force account construction work that we did for our office. So this is a grievance resolution. A gentleman in the health, welfare, and safety of the people of Madison County can, in many instances, be best and most efficiently be served by using force account in matters pertaining to construction, reconstruction, improvement, maintenance, or repair of Madison County roads and bridges. Those with all terminology straight on the Ohio advice code. Therefore, I am requesting your honorable board adopt a resolution authorizing Madison County engineer to use existing county employees and property and proceed by force account as outlined in Ohio advice code section five five four three dot one nine on Madison County roads and bridges during county year twenty twenty five. Include such roads and bridges to traffic as determined necessary.
To just as clarification, that's at your discretion. You only bid itself to serve them out.
Correct, so.
It was seventy-five thousand?
So on, we can, it's sense. I'll give you the lawyer answer.
Appreciate that.
On bridges, we have a force account limit of roughly two hundred twenty-five thousand. We can take on a bridge of that cost.
For seven inches.
Yes. For roads, that number is seventy thousand per mile. Now, if we are purchasing materials as part of that, we would have to bid out those individual materials if it is beyond the seventy-five thousand dollar bid threshold. Typically, what we do is smaller bridges and culverts, let's say bridges under seventy-five foot span. We are very capable of doing those in-house. Orter structures, particularly federally projects, we would bid those out of contract. Also, there's just things we're not that, we're not as equipped to do, such as main line retrofit. So we will bid out our, most of our paid work annually because we're just not as equipped to do that as contract.
So these thresholds have to do with the amount over which you would have to bid, is that correct? Under the thresholds that you gave the two?
Yeah, so if a bridge project exceeds two hundred, it's roughly two hundred twenty-five thousand, it changes every year, it increases slightly every year. If the cost of the bridge, the estimated cost of the bridge was beyond that amount, we would have to bid it out.
Okay, so we are authorizing this threshold? Or what do we?
No, you're authorizing the county engineer to do work with his own forces as he needs to.
Resolution authorizing Madison County engineer to do force account for county year twenty twenty five.
Good to approve.
Second.
A first and a second, any other discussion? None heard, please vote.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Doctor Sinigus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Next request I have is a resolution authorizing county engineer to develop and administer permits for county year twenty twenty five. So every year, you authorize me to issue permits for work within the road driveway, any digging or excavating within the road driveway, any oversized overweight vehicle permits, and a utility permits. So I'll read this and I'll add a caveat at the end with regard to private broadband. So, Ohio advice code sections one five three dot six four, forty-nine thirty-one, and twenty-nine thirty-three provides to the Board of County Commissioners the authority to control the installation and placement of any public utilities within the dedicated public rights way of all county maintained highways. Ohio advice code section five five eight nine provides to the Board the authority to control any digging and excavating on or along the county maintained highway. And Ohio advice section four five one three dot three four provides to the Board the authority to permit oversized and overweight vehicles using county maintained highways. Therefore, I am requesting your honorable board adopt a resolution authorizing Madison County engineer to develop and administer permits, including applicable fee schedules for the above described activities within county road rights way during county year twenty twenty five and keep said permits within the permanent road records of Madison County. With regards to the private fiber optic broadband providers, my intention is to utilize our permit process as a template and then come to your board with an agreement for those installations and make you part, make you parting to those approvals as those private providers come on.
Any sense?
Resolution authorizing Madison County engineer to develop and administer permits for county year twenty twenty five.
Would you approve?
I will second, I have a comment. So I'm, I'm not sure that I'm clear on what this will mean. I guess my request would be in the future, who could receive it ahead of time. I'm going to abstain because I'm unclear on what we're offering here. So I don't know if you want to elaborate anymore?
I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. So, Board of County Commissioners has the authority, has the permit authority. Historically, that has been delegated to the county engineer to implement. And that's, that's essentially what.
To implement any, any permits or?
You own the county and, so you own the right of ways of the application process to utilize those goes to the engineer's office. So he is asking for authority to establish a permitting process where individuals can come to the engineer's office, submit their applications for a permit to utilize the right of way and so on.
Okay. So that's, so nothing's changing?
Nothing's changed. I just, and the, you know, and the permit process is already established. This is merely a re.
Merely, I think you're talking about a new program.
No, this is merely a reauthorization for two thousand and twenty five.
As it first makes, these are things that usually just happen first of the year.
Before the government, the permits authorization, I come to you as board every, first meeting every year. And it's for reauthorization.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
Doctor Sinigus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Okay, the next, the next ones I have are also normal beginning of the year resolutions. They have to do with our weight enforcement program because of all our oversized and overweight permits. So, again, for brevity, but the county engineer at conjunction with county share, have a oversized overweight enforcement program. The, the equipment is owned by the county chair, deputy, let's say, sheriff's. The county engineer, the county engineer reimburses the cost of the employee of the deputy to account here. The engineer then receives the proceeds and the fines of per. Essentially, the proceeds from the many fines, sort of costs of the industry per. So every year, we move some, transfer some monies to that program to take. So the first thing I need to do, question your approval, make some changes on my two thousand and twenty five budget. Transfer one hundred twenty-eight thousand, ten dollars and seven cents from gas tax transfers into road and bridge transfers. Road and bridge, we'll then do, do a transfer from road and bridge transfers into some other lines. I can do this authorization.
This is a change to the budget that was passed?
This, it's not a change. It's, it's, it's appropriated money into proper accounts to, into the specific lines. It doesn't accrue out of the budget that is passed.
Appreciate that.
Move to approve.
Mr. Shea.
A first and a second, any other discussion? None heard, please vote.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Doctor Sinigus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Okay, next resolution request. That road and bridge transfers line was a revenue line. We now need to allocate that, that revenue line into the bridge's expense lines. Some requests are the following. Transfer eighty-three thousand one hundred eighty from road and bridge salaries. Transfer fifteen thousand fifty-five dollars fifty-eight cents from road and bridge PERS. Transfer one hundred thirty-one dollars eight and seven cents from road and bridge workers' comp. Transfer one thousand two hundred six dollars eleven cents from road and bridge Medicare. Transfer twenty-eight thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars and eight cents from road and bridge insurance into the sheriff road refund. The sheriff then paid his expenses out of that sheriff road refund for weight enforcement. Some requests.
Would they approve?
Second.
A first and a second, any other discussion? None heard, please vote.
Mr. Shea. Doctor Sinigus. Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Okay, lastly, is a budget transfer having to do with park board. Requesting a transfer of forty thousand dollars from the general fund transfers park board into the park district county share. That is the account that we will use to cover park board expenses. And my office has access to that. That budget to, if it's right.
So that's what we, for allowing. And so I just real quick to that, along with that is administration as well as M.O.A. and some maintenance and that sort of thing. Brian has an employee in his office, that handles that labor. I swear I asked him to pick up the, to me.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move a first and a second, any other discussion? None heard, please vote.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Doctor Sinigus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I had for this morning.
Thank you, sir. Good to hear it.
Mr. Shea. A few, few questions for Mr. Dean, would you mind? Sure. I know, I know we've got, you know, time constraints today, but just a few, few things. First, first of all, thanks for your welcome. And I look forward to working with you as well. I have a question about signage. So your office would do the signage for listed county roads?
County town two bridge.
I'm sorry?
County town two bridge. The township trustees ask for the over there roads. They tell you that's loud.
Okay, okay. How about State Road House?
That would be a tough one.
Would be a tough one. Is there any process that we can petition for signage? I've got a specific example on State Route fifty-six. And then also coming off of seventy, assuming that's ODOT as well.
Honestly, I would talk to their district office and I can get you a contact there. Just be aware that any signage that they place has to follow what's called the Ohio Bay Area Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which dictates placement of station, size, velocity, structure. So you have to just get a contact with the right person.
I appreciate it. Yeah, one is a safety concern of a bus that stops on fifty-six right after that hurt for multiple people. And the other is a sign that's been out coming off of seventy for basically since the program.
It might even be if someone was talking to the local county food garage. Mark Edwards is the county engineer out there. Their office is almost there up there on, unless you're. Figure it can stop by and think about.
I would stop by.
And then my, my other question is about the rumor. This may be a broader conversation after next week depending on time to make. We, you had discussed months ago the rumor. Since then, you've given updates about, I'm talking about the climate adjuster. And if they've not been in the community, if they've not received what you need of that. I was wondering if you could review, what is actually required? At least the rumor is actually forward looking? Is that what governs what type of events they would do?
We're going to require a rumor as a condition for their access. I mean, we could, we could require that during or access payment regulations, which are a set of regulations that guide how the county grants access to public road from property owners. So we can't, we can't prevent a property owner from accessing their property in general, but we can, we can regulate how that is done. So that's where if someone's going to request to use a driveway use and access to the public road driveway, we could require upgrades to the road. And that's good. Agree with all. Traffic and upgrades and that sort of thing.
So what would happen if we just said no to the buildup of the road? Can you do the rumor without, what would happen? And if they didn't meet the weight limit, essentially?
Yeah, I think we would be, we would be permitting a property owner access to their property. And I think we would have a hard time with that, frankly. So I think we have to, and I could be wrong, and I'll wait on this as well.
No, you're accurate. You can't be arbitrary and unreasonable.
Yeah.
It has to be an appropriate restriction. If you say no, the reason has to be articulated as it relates to why that specific driveway in that location would be harmful to the road.
It's not the driveway, it's the road.
We're talking, we're talking about the permit of access.
The access.
It is a driveway permit. That's what, that's what the rumor is conditioning.
Yeah, and, yeah. That driveway permit would be contained upon a rumor that would include appropriate improvements to the road. And, you know, to be clear, my, my last night I tried in here, you heard a lot of frustration in my voice. And that mostly had to do with just the nature of purpose evidence of the company. You know, as long as I have the information of that, I mean, I don't see a reason I can't get down with appropriate restrictions. And this board would be, your board would be party to improve on that.
Last question for now. Grand Mill Road, my understanding is the weight limit was reduced in part because of an issue with truck traffic going.
It was reduced for the bridge.
It was just, it was for the bridge. If Amazon had come to you and said, we'll, we'll do something to strengthen the bridge, I mean, could they have done that conceivably?
No, because Amazon was using it as a through route. Amazon doesn't need access to any property along. And Amazon I'm talking about are the trucks hauling to the warehouse. Those, those were through trucks. They don't need access to any property over the property.
Understood.
So we, when we were having that problem, of course, they're cutting across Gregville, White Run, over forty to inch of warehouse. Our only legal tool, toolbox, so to speak, is to put a weight on the road. And to put a weight on the road can't be arbitrary. We have to do an engineering study and analyze the actual weight capacity of the road and come up with what that is. So we took course of the pavement along Gregville and went around, analyzed what, what the load limit on that from an engineering standpoint should be with those Amazon trucks. And that's how we arrived at ten ton limit on White Run. The situation there is White Run Road only has asphalt buildup of about four inches. It's very, it's the secondary credit that would have been paid. Gregville's actually been paved with hop mix a few times. It's got about eight inches of hop mix built in. So from a weight capacity standpoint, Gregville Road is stable to withstand the weight of the trucks. So that's why we were not able to reduce the weight of the network. The production was due to the bridge.
If I'm understanding correctly, the difference between that case and this is that's a through route. So if they offered a load limit, you wouldn't have to accept.
No, Amazon was, was building warehouse on Gregville Road.
Right, that's the other.
I would, I would need to, I would need to accommodate that through.
Thank, thank you for your welcome.
See that Sheriff Swinney has joined us virtually. Sheriff, did you have any updates for us, sir?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Again, yes, sir.
Morning, gentlemen. I apologize for not being able to make it. However, a doctor's appointment makes me change my schedule. Oh, a quick update. As we know, we, we sustained quite a bit of snowfall. I've worked with our commissioner, our engineer, Brian Doom, there this morning. We, we chatted quite a bit over the last day along with the director, Mark Edwards from ODOT. They did a wonderful job. There are snow crews battling and cleaned up. We're still currently at level one, though, so I. They did a wonderful job, their snow crews battling and cleaned up, we're still currently at level one though, so I anticipate the roadways to, to improve. I'm sure Mr. Dim can report on that, but other than that, I had nothing for your honorable board this morning and once again apologize because I couldn't be present.
No worries, nobody appreciate you joining virtually, thanks for the update, sir.
Yes, you don't have anything to meet this morning.
I don't believe so, hope this time, appreciate it.
I will, I will stay on the line as long as I can.
All right, thank you, sir.
Uh-huh, bye-bye.
Mr. Cal?
Do we jump Rob or do you want me to?
Cause you're ready to roll.
Yeah.
I mentioned that they were all waiting through.
I, um, they are, but.
If the crowd is all waiting for data, we can go in.
That's, that's fine, that's all right.
I can go through this pretty quick, most of my business is going to be handled during organizational meetings, so five minutes more than that. So notified by email by the treasurer's office, which I forwarded to, to the board about a program to recognize outstanding employee performance as outlined, the program as outlined in N R C three twenty-five point two-five, basically allowing for additional benefits given by the appointing authority for outstanding employee performance and I, I did notify Stacy that. This was going to be on the agenda, so I don't know if, if you want to talk about it or do you want me to just kind of go through it or?
I just have a short five seconds, I'm actually waiting on a call from the bank. I just think it would be good for morale for the county if you could give some sort of incentive, retention for county employees. Just something in general because we all know that the county doesn't play the best. We, I, I'm not saying that it's bottom dollar by any means, but we, we just all know that some counties you can drive fifteen minutes down the road for some certain jobs and make a little bit more than you do for our county. And I just think that there's something that I can maybe offer my girls, whether it's a, hey, you haven't called off all year, so here's this. Or even if it's something simple like during your birthday month, you get your birthday off or one paid day off for the year or, or in that month, sorry, not for the year. Just something simple like that is, I just think it would be really good for morale and incentives and things like that for the county.
Thanks for coming over.
As you commented, the chairman, the president.
You know, I think we've done a good job of trying to retain employees with salary surveys. I think almost every office, we did a salary survey, almost every office, we did a mid-year adjustment, bringing those offices up to what we believe was competitive with other surrounding counties. I think Grand Mill are at a good place, we also give, I think last year it was four point two-five, this year it was three point five increase. So we try to give annual increases to make sure that people are at least keeping up with the rates of inflation and that we've lived through an inflationary time the last four or five years, so we've tried to keep up, really give more than the rate of inflation to make sure that our people are taken care of. So, and not to say that I'm against such a program, but I would have to see pretty good criteria for giving those bonuses out. I mean, I think there would have to be some sort of developed criteria, some sort of standard that was being met in order to get that, again, we're not going to give, give a bonus for you being here and doing your job, I mean, that's what we're meant to do.
Some departments, including ours, we do employee evaluations, we do have from year to year results on employee performance.
That would be something I would more likely to consider if there were something that was, you know, quarterly reviews, annual reviews, some sort of performance metrics that were being, you know, measured and, you know, we're seeing progress and that would be something that I, that I would consider, but I'd have to see something pretty detailed in writing to consider that program.
But I can't speak to other departments, whether or not they employ somewhere. And I agree with that, you know, we've done all we could to make it fair to work here. And part of it is you have to want to be here, Stacy's right. If you're here because of the money, I mean, we're doing our best to, you know, to be even with counties similar our size, but, you know, if you don't like it, then I think there's making another place where you can go. And we are stewards of the county's money, if they were working on, you know, commission, that's different, but we, we don't do that here.
Yeah, and we care about retention. When we went into parry over the last four years, we do care about retention, we do care about keeping good people, we've done a lot to hire good people. We brought on a number of people, in my, my previous four years here, we brought on a number of good people, very good people, very qualified people, separated. And, you know, so we've done a great job of bringing the good people to this, you know, the people that are under the commissioners and Brown and then know that other offices have done a good job of trying to bring people in, that they feel will do the best job. So as I said, I would be in favor of such a program or would consider, I didn't say in favor, I would consider a program if there were clearly defined metrics, the reported reviews, those types of things, that we're seeing some sort of progress, people going above and beyond as opposed to just, you know, doing nothing for it in their job.
And we've done, sorry, employee retention, you know, some, has been good. You know, except for job banking services has started to, yes, a higher turnover rate, I'd want to speak for the engineer on the larger departments. We've made steps, we've taken steps to, to curtail that.
Maybe twenty, eighty twenty of healthcare is put to seventy-five, twenty-five, so we've increased that cost as well for the county for the health employee retention as well. So I think we've done a number of things over the last four years to, to help employee retention.
Yeah, where I'm going with that is I don't think the treasurer's office has seen a lot of turnover in staff, so there, there could be, you know, people going to the treasurer saying, hey, I'm thinking about pursuing another position in my cell, I don't know, she hasn't shared that with us, but for sure that staff has remained intact for quite some time.
So I'll say, I, I will second any of the comments that have been made. I would also wonder if there's a specific initiative from that office that they're hoping to move forward, you know, is there something that's not being met? Is there an initiative, is there something to get into the whole morale thing, that is there something they're trying to incentivize specifically? I guess that's pretty common. So that would be, if that was the case, I think that would be interesting, but was there a resolution provided or was it?
No, it was just upon verification to, to bring to the board for consideration. So, and I will say there are other departments out there, offices in the county that offer incentives like wellness programs, Stacy mentioned, if you don't take so many hours of sick time, you get a bonus essentially.
Were those approved by this board or were those independent?
Independent, so I'm not sure the legality is on that, I would lean on them for that.
As long as they've also been in their budget.
Yeah.
They have, you know, talking over their department.
Yeah, yeah.
And the treasurer has the same, over their, over their existing budget, which are, unless it's allocated, so she could implement something.
As long as you, as long as she has the funds.
Yeah, program does not exceed the total amount of compensation fixed by the board of county commissioners.
Right.
That's at one point in time, we're, we're trying to look at labor costs. To see if money was being appropriated later in the year or some other time in the year into, is that a labor cost to say, you know, hey, we're paying for bonuses?
Yeah, cause they are, they are constrained to whatever employee salary we approve at the beginning of the year. So if it were to give out a bonus, obviously they'd have to come back to us for approval if that would exceed what we've already approved.
Correct.
For the salary line for that year.
Yeah, but oftentimes, we don't know exactly why, children are asking for changes online, so, you know, but we try to be aware. We try to say, okay, you're, you're increasing labor, why? So anyway, like I said, notification by treasurer's office, bringing it to the board for discussion and consideration. Not asking for any type of decisions there.
You know, if they come, I'd go back to, I can go back to the treasurer's office, you can go back to the treasurer's office, just like we played a little more detail. Like that, I'd get a little more fully fleshed out and some sort of written plan and how we want to pursue that.
They got the vacation pay out available this year.
They do.
Up to forty hours that they choose to, to be away for some of their, probably some hours, so to speak. I'll just add, we, the dynamic of being a rural county next to a fairly major metropolitan area where we all compete with Franklin County and those, those municipalities, I'll be very does as well. You know, I've had employees leave to go work at Franklin County Engineers Office and I've listened well, I'm happy for you. But, you know, the reality is we can't pay what they pay because our budget won't withstand it. So we don't, we don't, when we do our salary surveys, which we do every summer study, we do appropriate for years, we don't even include Franklin County in that because it completely skew out, we do include Park County and that skews it enough.
Right, greens fairly high.
Red ones too, so.
Union this.
Yeah, yeah. Bay is always low, Big Way is low, we're hanging middle, Union green higher, so.
Yeah, Union County goes back to Fort Book Marysville a long time. I have pretty good employees.
And the vacation payout includes a couple of things, one, you know, incentivizing employment as well as people that carry a tremendous amount of vacation like myself, I'm always on the edge of carrying too much and losing vacation, so, you know, that's a way to ensure that people get paid out that forty hours to reduce that area over at some point in time, so.
And is that universal, do all departments receive a vacation pay?
They can. If they, if an employee asks for forty hours, there's certain criteria that has to be met, like they have to have a certain, certain amount of vacation in the bank per se before they can cash out.
So is it only if they ask, do they have to be aware that they have this opportunity or?
Everyone is aware that they have that opportunity, they can go to their appointing authority and say, hey, I want to cash out forty hours of vacation, there's a form that they need to fill out.
Yeah, we added to our policy this year, the, the criteria is outlined in that policy. We're going to do it at, at December this year, it's not like someone get requested any time through this year.
Yeah, where our policy is, they don't request it at any point in the year, but ask it for it. So there is a mechanism for that.
And honestly, with the changes to the vacation leave, I mean, our, our leave policy is very generous.
It is, and as I mentioned.
I mean, once you've been here twenty years, you're earning, you're earning six weeks of vacation.
And that was increased last year for employee retention.
Most, most of my staff, except that, well, they have trouble, just like you.
That's me, yeah. Yeah, so January ninth, paid warning for President Jimmy Carter, this is a federal executive order, but the state has not made this move, so if you decide that you'd like to close for paid warning, that is totally after discussion of board of county commissioners. Bringing it to your attention. For January ninth, yeah, so two days from now. The state is not closing, the state departments are closing, most counties are staying open, that I've talked to in the County Administrators Association, but we've had some elected officials reach out to us here in the county saying, hey, what are you going to do? Are we going to stay open or are we going to close?
We'll, we'll remain open. My statement is stay open.
Okay, easy enough. Last thing I have on this is London City Council Public Hearing, January sixteen at six-thirty on ordinance creating nineteen incentive districts and declaring improvements. It's rear property within those districts and resolution two-ten, that's twenty-four, which is a petition to establish the London Gateway New Community Authority, which is an N C A. No decisions need to be made today, just bringing that to your attention, if you'd like to attend, if you would like me to attend, if you would like David to attend, and you all.
Do we add real quick?
And, and then I'll ask you to elaborate on.
So the attorney for the developer and property owner reached out to me, he wants, so the county cannot, has no role in this. They can either offer basically a resolution to support or stay kind of quiet. However, Representative Perfect Grade Caleb Bell is going to offer to come to the board to speak to county commissioners just to educate them about what's going on. He asked what that would be, when would be a good time, he said it was a big rush, I said probably the, the set, the third or fourth Tuesday in January, I thought Brad was getting his feet wet a little bit and getting in here, would be appropriate for Caleb to come here. So to, to Rob's point, we could attend, however, most likely the same information has to be shared, that meeting will be shared with the commissioners on either the third or fourth Tuesday of the month, so.
So I'm, I'm thinking the fourteenth, if we could have, and to give the board some information on that at that point in time. You could say, hey, we want to attend, we want you to attend, we want to oppose this, we want to support this, or we want to stay neutral at that point in time. Is that fair?
That's fine, yeah, I can text Caleb the offer.
He won't be here for that meeting, I don't know if that's an issue.
I don't think it's, that it's really too much of an issue, again, there's not any formal decision that needs to be A I, the V S C C. It's just, you know, those are, this county seat, it's your, your neighbor, it's a municipality, whether or not, you know, you want to oppose support or stay neutral, and in order to do that, I think you need to have that information presented to you in detail, better than what I can. And I'm sure they, Caleb can do better than I can as well, as far as this topic is concerned, but coming straight from the attorney representing, I think would be beneficial.
Yeah, nothing, so that's great.
I'll text Caleb, I'll let him know.
Yeah.
Fourteenth.
Very good.
Any position the county tip would be purely symbolic or act?
Correct.
By having a public hearing, you could, we could stand up and say yay, nag, you know, or if we're neutral, we, we can still attend or not even attend. But I did want to bring it to your attention for guidance. And that concludes my business, I'll have a lot for you during organizational meetings scheduled earlier today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Cal?
Sure.
So I've filed four items, it looks like. First item, and we do have representatives, that would be open to answering questions or even speaking, but in front of you is a resolution regarding a proposed enterprise zone agreement for expansion with Jefferson Industries. It's an exciting growth project and opportunity. Thirteen hours ago, gave the same, same talk to West Jeff Council, so I'll just kind of go through my notes and then I'll turn over. Again, I'll introduce the two reps with G I C and then I know the mayor wants to say a few words as well. So Jefferson Industries is proposing a hundred and eighteen thousand square foot expansion at their existing location. The proposed project would retain a hundred and thirty jobs in an effort to retool and expand their facility while bringing a new product produced and housed at the facility in West Jeff. It is in competition with the state in the southern U S, that's what they would like to be shared publicly and privately, there is a specific location, but they don't want to have that out publicly at this time. They are pursuing the enterprise zone agreement at ten years, seventy-five percent to help support securing the opportunity for the West Jeff facility. They are going to have to make a pitch to Japan to, to really sell, excuse me, the, the property, because again, it is in, in competition with another state. And Jefferson Industries has been in the community for over three decades and has had a great, been a great corporate citizen to the village in Madison County. We do have representative for Jefferson Industries, Matt Breenzo, and Jefferson Industries consultant, Marty Brenner, and they're happy to answer any questions, we all are, and provide more information and, like I mentioned, the mayor of West Jeff did want to come to bay and give a few words as well. Do you want to start with the mayor?
Sure. Okay, great, hey, I appreciate you taking time out to, to listen to me. For West Jefferson, this is a win-win situation. Everybody talks about a bait, and so when you, when you're talking about a bait, then you're talking about cutting. For West Jefferson, this is a win-win situation. Everybody talks about a abatement. So when you, when you're talking about an abatement, you're talking about cutting money that comes to the county, money that comes to the, the fire departments and things of that nature. Well, when the state of Ohio created these CRAs and these abatements, there is a circle that it goes to. We, we were stagnant for a long time trying to figure out what we're supposed to do with these things. But on the backside of that comes the housing that pays all the millage to these, to these entities, especially the fire. And that's one of the biggest things that we're concerned with as well. So then schools are always made whole. But with this situation here, the, the ten, the ten seventy-five, the school gets twenty-five percent. They like that because it's more than what they get otherwise. The fire department likes that because it's more than what they get over time, over, over time. You know, with that cycle of the, the abatements, it takes time to get that housing into place. West Jefferson last night just passed the one hundred and thirty-nine unit housing addition. That's the second one in the month of December that they passed. The other one was one hundred and eighty house, housing addition plus, uh, what was it? Three hundred apartments. So we are catching up finally, once we start understanding how to do this. So, and this, and none of those are abated. None of the housings are abated. So everybody in the county, everybody's gonna be getting those taxes. As you know, last year also Redwood was dedicated and finished as well. You know, Dave didn't mention one thing that I'm gonna mention, whether I get in trouble or not. There's a hundred and thirty jobs at stake here. That's not a hundred and thirty jobs in, for West Jeff people. There are West Jeff people that work there, but there's people in the county that work there as well. So, and we had one council member vote no, that they did not want a hundred and thirty jobs to be retained. Well, I would ask you to consider voting yes, because these are a hundred and thirty jobs of our residents that depend on them jobs and they're halfway decent jobs as well. So with that, I would ask you to strongly consider it and help us to get in the competition and retain this. And, and I'm, I'm not gonna lie to you, I'm pro-growth. We have a designated area. We call it the Golden Triangle and we'd like to fill that up to help everybody out. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you guys considering our project. I'm just like selected consultant and to me, it doesn't necessarily matter where this goes. But I know Matt and like to see these stay here and not only are these retaining that, there's new opportunities that I'm shocked with the employees there. Like I think the group of employees at J I C today have been there for a really long time and these new opportunities I think are great. As the automotive industry, as you all probably know, is transitioning to battery electric vehicles or whatever is next. So this project is important for West Jefferson and for J I C here to, to maintain their operations and get ready for what's next. And we appreciate if you have any questions. We're here to answer. If you want to say anything.
We buy your partnership from the Village of West Jefferson County Chamber and with David Kel's supporters and Mayor Martin. We are very proud of the community that we've established in and we want to continue to stay established here and bring some of the leading technologies to the area for the citizens.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And we appreciate your commitment to West Jeff and Madison County, also to Hill.
Some comments and questions over. Is that the time?
Yes, go for it.
Oh, thank you. Well, thank you for being here. Thank you, Mayor Martin, for being here, for your comments. And I want to thank David Kel for your, all your work on this, including doing your very best to catch me up to speed. You know, I've tried to really delve into the quick study, review the application. I understand the, the reason for the fairly quick timeline. In my case, you know, it's not my timeline. I'm just coming here as an official now for, for just a few days. And I understand the comments that the, the mayor said and I agree with, with many of them. I, I do think saying, are you voting for a hundred and thirty jobs, yes or no? I think that oversimplifies it simply because there's negotiations involved in this. And so in the future, I, I plan to be extremely involved in these type of negotiations. Do not have the ability to do that at this time because I'm brand new. So for that reason, I'll be abstaining from the vote. But I would second what Chair Wallace said, our appreciation for your commitment to this community. I want to make a comment and a couple of questions. I think many community members recognize that some of our big businesses, some of our, our national, international corporations don't always do a lot to invest when it comes to fairs and festivals and some of those ways. And you do, and it's noted, it's noted and it's appreciated. So I thank you for that. I wonder if you could tell us if you have any criteria that you'd use when you're contacted to, to participate in our community like that. So that's one question. And then the other is beyond the numbers, beyond the dollars and cents, which I will list is what you're going to be presenting to Japan. Other than that, what aspects of this community of your current operation are you going to be highlighting? It just, I think it's good for us to know, you know, what you see as some of our, some of the strengths here. And any things that you think are impediments that maybe are outside of the scope of, you know, this request, like would be good for us to know as well. So, thank you for that.
Well, I'll let Matt answer the points of your question. I don't know if we have already answered that.
For the, for participation in the community events, we do have internal policy that sets requirements for nonprofit and dollar amounts. That we try to adhere to, to make it equal between the county, the village and any other charitable events that we participate in. For the, the community, we've had a very long relationship within the location we're at over thirty years. We've had great support from the community where that may not always be the case in other areas. It's an unknown when we're looking at another location in the Southern U S. We can't say what that relationship's going to be like, but we can say that the relationship we have with the village and the community is great. They're very willing to work with us. So that's one of the things that we'll sell to our parent company, that we know the condition here. It's an unknown in the Southern U S.
And, and that means a lot in the Japanese, we need for that as a business case. If the community is supportive, they perceive that that is awesome here. So that makes a big difference. Obviously, cost in today's world is a big deal as you have expensive transition in automotive. It's critical these days. But also that fit and feel and the proven labor force that they have here and the dedication or at the top level, how long they stay as a consideration, the fit and feel and overall operating cost. The South, overall has pretty great incentive program, in particular Georgia. They have an ongoing quality job credit that you can get structurally without negotiation. So if you create the jobs you, you get a credit, which we do not have here. They have, what kind of hard is they have, the area we're looking at, they allow for private tax abatement on real and personal over a fifteen year period. So that does hurt our cause, but we're hoping that these other things and this incentive support will help make the business case to move forward here.
Thank you. Appreciate this comment. The mayor?
I'd just like to say, one of the main reasons I'm here is to help us all understand how important those jobs are. Right near your say, obviously, that it's overstated. I don't believe it is. I've had friends and relatives that work at Jefferson Industries and the longevity of their employment out there tells you that they're good and poor that we want to have in our community. And the county doesn't rely on jobs for their, for their income. Municipalities do. We rely on that income tax and also to help grow our community, to help the county as well. So I would ask you to reconsider your abstaining and think about it and not get, get up to speed on this thing so that we can, you know, if we had thirty employees here, that we're gonna lose our jobs. It would be a different situation and we would be concerned with them. I mean, they're, they're a great company. We don't do enterprise zones very often. I mean, we have the right to do a CRA that, that just becomes a checklist for the county. But this is one where because of that company working with the village and working with the schools that they've, I mean, there might be some potential with the schools, but the, the schools came with us and they, we want this. We want that twenty-five percent.
J I C has expanded several times over the years and they have not pursued an abatement every time. They only do it when it's critically necessary for the position.
As I mentioned, they've been, they've been a good member of the community. I know we're appreciated number of the community, appreciated by the county, by West Jefferson, and we appreciate your presence here. And I agree with your comments of any jobs, any good, any quality jobs we can get to Madison County, I'm all for it. So that being said, we get to the resolution, please.
Yeah, I just would like to respond to that. I, I appreciate that. And of course, I don't want to lose a single job. What I'm getting at is the fact that the vote is not necessarily a yes to retain one thirty jobs or no to let them go. I, I realize that's part of the calculation, like that's part of negotiations. That's, that's all I'm saying is that there is, there is a negotiation. There was a negotiation that went on. And I would like to, I couldn't because I wasn't a commissioner. But that's all.
And I think you'll find out in the future that the negotiation did go on and this is what you get with those negotiations. Cause the last time, the negotiations were on and you can't, I mean, that's, it's, to be able to go out to one of those companies and say, hey, we want you, and we do have, we do have a partisan rent manager that goes out to these companies and they help West Jeff out a lot. But to, to say you're gonna come in and you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna give this much to this, this fair or this much to that, you know, people don't understand the tax amendments in that way. You know, they get a tax amendment to create jobs for a community. That's a lot. And, and I would say that this is a vote for jobs. Because if you vote no today, that's Southern, that's Southern identity. I mean, I don't know, I, I feel that they've come to the, to the negotiations as far as they've come and this is the type of.
We're doing good. You break down the resolution.
Yeah, I understand. I, I agree with your, he's got to retain jobs. That's, I will second.
May resolution authorizing Madison County, Ohio to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with the village of West Jefferson, Madison County, Ohio, and Jefferson Industries Corporation.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Walk off, please.
Mr. Shane.
I'm staying.
Dr. Nigus.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes. Well, that was a big coffee break. Thanks, Tom.
We're on the same. We're on the same page. I just.
We get pretty good tonight.
It's the same thing with us. It hasn't been as long. I understand that, but I guess our, this, what are you doing?
I think so. And that's right. So we have Tom saying, this is how we do it. It's the state law.
I think so. And in reference to the convention.
Yeah, that's actually quite common.
That's because you're.
I think the problem, Tom, if there was anything different, the only conclusion I can come to is I directed Tom and Holly and we did it. We contacted the cricket people. As we know, our entity, entity has controversy. So what's, our concern is to make sure that whatever happens.
Did you drive with me now?
Attorney Carver, your partner. Oh, yeah. Well, I know it's so many municipalities could attack.
You look good, John. Hey, eyes on red.
Does that make sense?
Eyes on red.
I'm gonna answer, maybe a month. I've got to the car. I just, I couldn't, Holly and Tom, I think, I think it's supposed to be to your, you know, make sure we're doing something that adversely affected to the county. I mean, to be frank with Tom and Holly, and so there's already a lot of. Yeah, they're interested. The problem is liquor. Went down by eleven liters. And I estimate we can say. I didn't realize there was anything in there.
If I don't know. With Marge May, and I think that's, if I have to guess, I don't know how many it's like, but my guess is we want to start with our establishment. We keep adding properties. I don't know.
You, uh, somebody rad one?
You do Marge May. They got that, so like, they don't get that.
I used to have, I used to know some guys with.
I mean, we're able to do the town hall if that's needed. I know it's a conservative township. He's gonna ask for a favor. He's gonna ask for a favor.
There's some favors to use the full.
I told the cricket people. But I don't see it as a sin or as a head of the hill. It's your choice. I've come to the conclusion. I'm not sure that it's supposed to lead to something. What we think is worse is to opt for the ticket. So for me to impede someone else from stopping. Now it took over, I've had some more stories, but you do, that's why we have all those in places. Does that make sense?
I can reach out. Go to back there because I think that's, that's a good mindset. Let's see if he wants to have.
Do you understand what I'm up to?
You did that. To be considered or more people get educated on it. But maybe check two layers, multiple, I see where the people are at.
Business is business. And, and so, yeah. Yeah, I understand business is position. And I'm sure there's some of my people. We don't stop getting gas at the Shell gas station.
Does that make sense?
Mr. Cal, back to you, sir.
Sure. Yep, so three more items, pretty quick. It is report season for the abatements. So to. So typically send it out, send out the reports the first week of January and give, we, I think we have five or six. This one that was just passed will not be evaluated this year, but I think we have five active that are, the county is a party to. So typically in either late February or early March, those reports are presented to the board, we will have a review committee. Jennifer's office typically heads that, so we'll do that, that as well, and so I just want to give everybody a heads up that this is support season, which I dread, but it's part of the gig, so. Because that is like herding cats, because I do it for West Jeff too, and I do it for London and everybody else. Any questions?
Yeah, I have. Taxure twenty-four, pay twenty-five, do you mean?
I guess.
Twenty-three, pay twenty-four is what we'll be reviewing.
Uh, the report's for twenty-four.
Yeah, for what they, they had a game of twenty-four, which should be tax.
Okay, so yeah, tax required.
Sure.
I would maybe use those, yeah. Next is the Port Authority, I know that with Rob, a few, a couple of years ago, a few years ago, we, we established kind of a new procedure to. Uh, look at boards that the county commissioners appoint to, um, there are two open boards, or two board seats are up for reappointment. Uh, or up for appointments, one is, I know by Mr. Wallace, I think the county will want to continue to have representation. There's another held currently by Mr. Steve Alonick. There are two individuals that submitted resumes that went out to the community and asked them to submit, so I'm submitting these resumes, take a look at for you all. Rob and I'll take a look as well, if there's anybody who are interested in having tone, next meeting, uh, next couple of meetings to, to. Talk and I consider for that board seat, you certainly can have that happen, so. Just presenting these today, no consideration of that, just for your, your information.
What would be a good desire on that?
Uh, I, so the way that the appointments have been set up, when the term expires, which technically expired on the thirty-first. We want to wait for the new commissioner to come in, the way that was written though, um, is that the term, the person in the seat does not. It's not as though there's an open seat right now, if that makes sense, that person will, would continue until a new appointment is made or they are reappointed, so. I think we're looking at probably the third or fourth, Tuesday in January making that decision, and, and then we'd have a, uh, that person. Serve on, if it's a new person, start in the second week of March, or if it's a reappointment with Mr. Alonick, he would continue starting.
I, I intend to keep my seat on, on, on the board, I think Mr. Alonick would like to keep his.
He has his website, yeah. Absolutely, yep. And then, any questions?
We have a resume from Steve, right?
Uh, we do want to file, I'll get that, yeah, ID from when he, when he first, yeah, was interviewed, so. Any questions on that? The last item, um, from an eco development product update, uh, you know, we're getting very, very, very close to. Having the Honeywell building filled, um, it's gonna be, I mentioned the Italian company that we've been working with, they toured the facility, they liked the facility. They're going front of BVA with, um, the city of London, they're gonna need a tower that's gonna exceed heights, height standards. Uh, for the particular zoning, if they get that approved, then all, it seems it's a move forward purchasing that building and bringing new boys to that building as well, so. Very attractive building, but there was a lot of interest in that, so.
How long's it been, basically?
Uh, it was May, May, so.
Not, not as long as I thought.
No, no.
And that's what type of tower, self, self tower?
No, they, so they need about, it's between five and ten times square foot tower that, they do electric cable manufacturing. So they're gonna need to string it and everything in that tower and extend it, so that's what the, the use is gonna be, so they would alter that building, uh, to build a tower there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cal.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, looks like Stacy, you're, you're up next for engineer's office bond approval.
I gave you the all. Yep, it's just, it's just to, um, approve the seventy-five thousand for the engineer's ditch bomb. And then sign the papers, and Jennifer and I are already signing them.
Okay.
So that's all it is, make a motion to.
Resolutional permission. The issuance of seventy-five thousand dollar ditching for the bonds.
Go to different.
Second.
In the first and the second, any other discussion? Don't hurt, roll call please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Dr. Nigus.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes. You get up.
The, the other place where the commissioner is signing.
I think it's just, can you run there and see? What do you want me to say to you?
Is there just one on my pocket?
Yes, there is.
Saying this now is obviously a sign. So. Jennifer, you go ahead and sign your part on this agreement, that's just my signature.
What store?
What do you got? She's chilling down in my, oh, dear. I mean, if your kids go back to school, let's figure that out. Yeah, mine, mine was back those two days.
Yeah, next week, yeah. Been working this whole time, that class starts at thirteen.
Paying out for four weeks is about. My daughter's pretty good at getting money out of me now.
In a lot.
It's up to the public tax, isn't it, for? You want to be a commission lawyer? No, only good for, for the universe, chairman of the project council. Oh, no, no, I'm taking investment counsel, so I assume this is an update from the last meeting.
Would you have an update from the budget commission? Does the budget commission, is there some sort of update from the budget commission? Okay.
What's that?
You want to turn off that reservation?
All right, we'll continue the meeting, uh, we've, we have nine-thirty open session, if anybody that has comments, questions, any concerns for open session? All right, here we're done, ten o'clock, we have budget commission, was there an update from the budget commission?
Yeah, I, I think there's some confusion, the budget commission is meeting. But not here.
Oh, okay.
So I think it was just a notification that.
For meeting.
It's a public meeting today, not on the commission.
I thought maybe you had some sort of update.
I saw that this morning, I didn't see it on the agenda.
All right.
I think that's been on there a long time ago, but.
There's a, there is a change in law, the budget commission now has to meet every month. Yeah, like you mean.
Zach, very good, okay, now it's, it's no base for us, all right, what were the names of that?
I have two resolutions that, um, are not part of the current position for me. One is from, um, the Department of Job and Employment Services, and they were asking for a new position. The resolution increases appropriations to the twenty-twenty-five Department of Job and Employment Services budget for a new job, funding for childcare position and upcoming anticipated retirements. So they're asking a hundred and twenty-five thousand in the employee salary, seventeen thousand five hundred into the DRS, three-three thousand two hundred thirteen into Medicare assistance. And so it's not going to be funded by anybody else, they're asking.
I'm, I'm gonna ask, yeah, you're off on that until I can get to your.
That's, yeah, that's been my comment about the general.
Yeah, I don't think I have that.
He just came and dropped that off with a company here.
She may have been in like six, eight months ago, we'll talk about that, but I need to go back and, before we create any positions, you know, thoroughly have a discussion.
Um, also an increasing appropriations to the twenty-twenty-five cost of Medicare expenses by twenty-five cents. And, and if the, the budget that was passed was twenty-five cents to, so they want to.
First and second, any other discussion? Not hard, roll call please.
Yes, Dr. Nigus.
Yes, just get away with it.
Organizational meeting?
Yeah, Judge Brown is gonna swear, we're gonna be at ten-thirty. We're sorry, I, Amy, could you send out the agenda for the organizational meeting? No, I, I just, you'd send it to me.
I thought you were just giving.
I'm glad.
I thought you were just giving it to me direct, I'm sorry.
I'm just, I'm just, you have it, and you send it back to me then.
My chair, you got your chair.
Yes, yes, this is the top, we've got a pretty, pretty long, uh, so.
All right, no, let's go.
Just, you know, right, four chair.
It's always been a little tight.
Not a lot of less.
I have to, you guys go to the organizational.
What's that?
Go for all.
Yeah, employees several years back, but she caught her toe, fell forward, broke her tooth. Fallen downstairs, like. Running in pairs, or maybe. You know, our. Tried back and forth. The official prosecutor's office.
Times I do call it the campus, and.
Well, we get a new administration building, building.
Results, right?
Yeah.
All right. Keep care.
See you this evening?
Yes, see you this evening.
I'm there for the meeting, so I will not be there this week.
Okay, I'll let you go.
I'd say you can slow it down.
I can't.
Tony's not gonna be there.
Tony's not gonna be there?
Yeah.
Sorry, my glasses.
What's up?
John Warren, John Warren, Bob.
So gentlemen, I recommend moving into your twenty-twenty-five organizational meeting, as Stoney mentioned, the election of the president of the board of county commissioners for twenty-twenty-five has already happened. Congratulations, Mr. President, if you need a bodyguard, I'll take a bullet for you. I didn't offer that. Next on the list is the establishment of the meeting dates and plans and locations of your twenty-twenty-five meetings. Amy has provided that to you, keeping with the traditional schedule of Tuesday mornings.
So on, on evening meetings, I've had conversation with you.
So on, on evening meetings, I've had conversations with you already about it. I don't have a problem with it, but is there a possibility that, first of all, we could change the schedule later on, which probably we shouldn't. Uh, but there is always a possibility of having a special meeting to invite public, whoever wants to do whatever, you know, talk, you know, whatever. Those people that can't attend the morning. There's a few reasons why, you know, like, I believe why it would be difficult to have them in the evening all the time. Mr. Wallace's schedule is, a lot of evening work. I don't want to be just meeting you, we should all be together, right? There's a few meetings, a month that we have to attend in the evenings on Mondays and Tuesdays. And there's other functions that we need to go through, public functions that are usually in the evenings. I think those are good because that hits us out to the public, and people see us then, like, talk to us about their issues or whatever it is, but I'm in favor of having, you know, some meetings in the evening, as special meetings, you know, and, and we could set a schedule for, you know, as needed, or whatever, I'm, I'm all good.
Yeah, I, I think I'm fine with the current meetings, maybe Tuesday morning, eight thirty, yeah, same thing, and I'd be fine to have a special meeting in the evening as necessary. And I, as of right now, I don't see any need to have evening meetings.
Plus, we have to have a deputy downstairs.
Yeah, you have to have the courthouse open to the public, you have to have, you know, a deputy security for the courthouse at that time, because we would have to open up the courthouse after hours to have that public meeting. And you have to have, obviously, staff that have to be here as well for that evening meeting, so they would have to come here outside their normal eight to four hours as well. So I'm not opposed to evening meetings, but I think they need to be as necessary. Right now, I don't, I don't see the need for any particular special meeting.
So my, my comment would be, uh, we may not know, you know, who's not there that would like to come and address the board on a topic that we may not be aware of. You know, obviously, there's some topics that were more aware of, right, when the biogestor came up.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, you know, because you were aware of it, and it would have said, we can do a special meeting. Uh, but I think as a matter of principle, it's, it's a service that, that I was hoping this, this board could provide to the public.
I think it provides a great service, anybody can contact me anytime, via email, cell phone, we get on my cell phone, anybody that reaches out, I tell, I tell Rob, give him my cell phone, I tell Dale, give me my cell phone. But I don't think people have any difficulty getting to talk with us, so they want to have a conversation about an issue. Zero, zero difficulty.
Yeah, but there is, there is a difference between contacting, like, a commissioner probably, and being able to address the board in a public way like that. So that's, that's what I'm advocating for.
So maybe, maybe there's a possibility where, you know, maybe we could put something on the, on the website, or somehow, you know, on so that, uh, the face goes that, you know, people can request, or, you know, that if they have something that's that important, then we will hold a special meeting, we will make ourselves respond, uh, available for that. I, I, I've been doing this for six years, and people call me all the time, and I, I, I try to help them if I can. If I don't know something, I keep my mouth shut until I get an answer, right? Because I don't want to give out false information to anybody, and if they can't make it, okay, then I, I try to help them get their answer in any way possible. Most people, I don't think, want to come in here, they have a question, they're doing that question answered, and if their question is answered, I think, I think they're happy to have it. And, and that's my experience.
Yeah, I echo that, just with my theory, I never had any more comment that they feel like that we're not available, you know, or that we needed a public meeting to, a public meeting in the evening to address an issue, or we're not available to address their questions, concerns, comments that they may have.
And, you know, before this year, we really didn't even have open session in the past, no one had open session, you know, so we value that as, you know, and I understand that people want to go to work, like I do. You know, uh, so I have a, a, a pretty good work schedule every day. Can't be in the county twenty four hours a day, because I love my family, I want to spend some time with them when I can, you know, you do. So I am available to anybody, anytime, just as he said, phones available. And do I get a lot of phone calls looking at most of the times that I need to be on the street, you know, talking or something, they want to talk, absolutely, let's go.
Well, um, I, I appreciate those comments, and I would say, I think the open session, the way it's going all, you know, all through the biogestor and everything, I think it was good.
Sure.
The fact that many bodies, you know, there's some there with the stopwatch, right, at three o'clock, you know, so ding ding ding, see you, right? And, and I think that it's wonderful that, you know, this is open, and I have heard from many people who said, I wouldn't consider coming to a meeting if it wasn't for you. So I, you know, I, I know that's just my subject experience, but I have heard that from other people. So I'm gathering, I'm, I'm in the minority, I don't know if there's something with some regularity, whether it was quarterly or twice a year. Uh, because again, special meeting, what, what would be the threshold, you know, one person contacts us, I mean, which I'd be open to, but still what I'd advocate for, if I'm upset.
I mean, if you should get to reading meetings and, and without a topic, you know, that's, that would be just an input from somebody that wants to say something. I don't know if anybody would show up.
It can be not, maybe, yeah, to me, you know.
I mean, like, well, we got, if you get a, well, somebody gets a holding, and they say, hey, you know, this is what I want to talk to you about, right?
Well, it's, it's like the biogestor, right? I mean, it wasn't a session, but we had open, you know, public, you know, working with the town, so we did hold a public town hall, and so we're always available to hold a public town hall type event. I would be more willing to advocate for public town hall events if there was a particular topic of concern, where you knew there were probably a large group of citizens that wanted to discuss an issue. So and I'd give talks in front of, you know, two hundred people, uh, early on in my term, about solar, at, at Farm Bureau, I'd give a room, you know, full of people, so I think we're always willing to have conversation, to answer questions based upon public, and I think those town hall forums are more, uh, I think you get more attendance when it's affiliated with another organization like the Farm Bureau, because the Farm Bureau, quite frankly, they're the ones that got their membership to come to that event, so it's better to me if you could schedule something with a community group in the evening, that way they could draw in their membership, and you probably get better attendance, and more people are there to ask questions and, and make comments.
And was that a meeting with our illustrious Suren Honor, where I was given three minutes?
That's.
And I told them, that's not, that's not appropriate, but I said, you know, like, the Commissioner GBA, who's always chair, I said, I give everybody the opportunity to speak, and I give everybody the opportunity to have as much time as they need. Their answer was, that's not the way we do it here. And I think that is a pro per.
Great. Well, I maintain my preference, but I understand what.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll move forward with the schedule as, as, and yeah, we get a lot, if we get a couple of people that say, I do love the government, the Commissioner, we need, we need an evening meeting to discuss a particular topic, I'd hope that would be, and I would so we're done, yeah.
Could we, could we remove the eight thirty time from, you know, it sounds like we'll plan to continue at eight thirty, but if we remove the time, which is not a requirement, but we could, if there was a time that we wanted to move and make a regular meeting in the evening, we could do that, whereas if we named the time.
Keep the time, I didn't want to keep the time on the schedule. Otherwise, I don't know what timing it is to go at work.
Right, but the, the time gets, there's a public announcement about it, right, you, you, you announce.
Yeah, so as long as you have a twenty four hour notice.
So we'll just set the meeting and say we meet every Tuesday, and then just put out the twenty four hour notice of the time every week.
Which we do anyway, but, yeah, so it would establish the calendar as presented without the time, so you would.
Can.
Yeah.
So to move the meeting, you just need twenty four hours notice, so if we found out that there was a need to change the time, all we have to do is say twenty four hours before that, our regular meeting will now be here.
Yeah, and that's why I say stick with the time, because even, even, even then, hell, then twenty four hours, if we could change the time, so I don't think, not so.
There's a mechanism to do it either. Let's look at that. And then the other reason for having these meetings in the morning is a lot of times you'll see, somebody will come in with, you know, a request, just like the last one that we've been brought on, and we have no idea what it is, right? So now, let's, I'm, I'm going to use as an example, for example, the other bureau's office has a request, and we don't understand what it's about. So what we do is, we, we call them, you know, and get a clarification, because they're here, or they will come in and clarify. So that helps us make a decision that day, rather than saying, well, I will see you next week. And it may be something very pressing that has to be taken care of. See where I'm at?
I, I do, but I also think they can communicate with us.
They try to, but, so always plan, but, you'll go find out very quickly the other office does that. I was just using that as an example, but there, you know, there are questions that arise with every department, and there appears that time, that's important.
Yeah, let's just stick with Tuesday mornings at eight thirty, with the idea that if there is, and the need arises, or if we are contacted by a group of people that would like us to hold a meeting, that we would certainly be open to that idea.
They have to do it twenty four hours, yeah. Correct, correct.
All right, moving on.
Yeah, so is there a resolution you're trying to make?
Of, of all, well, can we do it all at once, or we'd have to.
She has. She's only had a resolution.
We're resolution for each one.
Okay, very good.
We'll do it for.
Moving for the twenty twenty five.
All right, the first and second, any other discussion, unheard, roll call, please.
Mr. Shen.
Yes.
Doctor Sneakers.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes. Next is the establish approval of paid holidays for twenty twenty five number here. The change, is that available as well?
Move to the second. Second, first and second, any other discussion, unheard, roll call, please.
Holiday, right, that was.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Mr. Shen.
Yes.
Doctor Sneakers.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Those are as they were last year.
Yes. Appointment of a full-time clerk, wouldn't assist in the clutter.
Yeah, we, I've heard a lot of things where we don't need our solution, uh, for part-time clerk, but we do need for full-time clerk.
You believe that?
I'm sorry? So Amy, it might be easiest if you just read that resolution for clerk.
Resolution appointing Amy Reese as full-time mask captain, Board of Commissioners, for consent to IRS, cut in section three oh five, thousand thirteen.
Will it prove?
Please, second.
First and second, any other discussion, unheard, roll call, please.
Mr. Shen, yes, Doctor Sneakers, Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
All right, so we don't need to appoint the assistant clerk, do you have a resolution?
I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I would go ahead and jump to the appointment of county administrator. I didn't have these on orders, but I sent Amy to the resolution, so. If you just got a resolution. Why don't you just?
A resolution appointing Ross Lanes mask captain, Administrator for consent to the IRS, I always cut in section three oh five, top two.
To prove, second, first and second, any other discussion, unheard, roll call, please.
Mr. Shen.
Yes.
Doctor Sneakers.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes. Thank you, that one I do appreciate that.
What's next, the hearing list, then, do you want to still hear this?
A resolution approving travel mileage reimbursement of seven seventy five.
What was the last one?
What sixty five was last, this lines with the IRS.
So I did, um, take a look at this, um, we did not increase it, I believe, uh, last year. It was, we kept it a little bit lower than the IRS, um, suggested rate, seventy cents is the new suggested rate by the IRS. Um, so of course you have the, um, ability to establish that to whatever amount you feel appropriate, um.
So last year it was kept stable?
Yes.
And how much did the federal suggest rate?
I believe it jumped to sixty seven cents.
From what?
From sixty two and a half.
And we kept it at sixty two?
Yes.
And now we go up to seventy? If that's what.
So the, the basis is just entirely on the IRS schedule, so, um, but you can certainly raise it, you can certainly lower that, whatever board feels appropriate. That is really the only, um, metric I have to give off of.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, what was the rationale of not staying with the federal rate last year?
I, I don't know, that is, I, I don't believe that is what the recommendation was, I think it was the voters have decided if you could the cycle.
Because that's a, that becomes a much bigger job, right? How, how does that affect budget?
It, it's pretty minor, considering we have, uh, county vehicles available for, for most, for most, uh, employees, so mileage reimbursement is pretty minimal.
Do you have a sense of what?
I, I, I don't, dollar, dollar figure wise, but it's mainly, like, somebody goes to a meeting, or a conference, and back, and they use their personal vehicle. That's sporadic, um, it's not something that is an all-day, every-day kind of thing, and most people, uh, use county vehicles.
Is there any out-of-state travel that gets included?
Uh, there is, so this would, uh, work into out-of-state travel, but you have to approve all travel expenses separately. You have a travel request, which would include a breakdown of costs, which would include mileage, if the county vehicle wasn't being used.
I'd like more information on the cost impact. What does that, that to be, if it go from sixty to seventy?
So I can, um, I can hear what the other bureau's office is saying, see what the total payout was for mileage, and then apply that same number of miles to twenty twenty five, that's it. That's a new rate, to see what the impact would be. Sound good?
Yeah.
All right, still move to approve that. Second. First and second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shen.
No.
Doctor Sneakers.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes. I'll still provide that to you, though.
Thanks.
Want to read this one?
Cell phone.
Almost, I have to go. Resolution authorizing monthly cellphone reimbursements for employees using personal phones for their work purposes and not sustained five fifty dollars, from last year.
And that has not increased or decreased for a number of years. It might go through six years.
Second. First and second, any other discussion?
We really haven't had any pushback from employees on that amount, so that's why I recommend the, the fifty dollars. That was four five hours start, so that's. Yeah, I think we did well about when we first started, the five hours, something.
Yep, the first and the second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shen.
Yes.
Doctor Sneakers. Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the county administrator to sign agricultural easements on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners in twenty twenty five.
Let's approve, second, first and second, any other discussion?
So just to elaborate on this a little bit, this is the agisment program for the Saltwater Conservation District. Those, um, applications, um, come before you, the way it provides those to you, you have to approve them. Once they're approved, then they go to, uh, Flax Law Firm, or Midland Title. For closing, what you are providing, what you're giving me authority is to sign on your behalf, like, on all the closing documents. So everything will be set in stone, I'm just signing on behalf of me. We can do it as a blanket for the whole entire year, or we can do each agisment separately, whatever. We did it for the whole year, so I suspect we continue to do what we've been doing. They're going to be presented before you sign it, and if you have any questions at that time, you ask them, it's all way through.
First and second, any other discussion, I don't believe so. We roll call, please.
Chair.
Yes.
I would, Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
And Amy or Rhonda, if you guys will send that resolution to Midland Title, so they have it on file.
And I just, I told me this to a class, I didn't vote on the mileage, just because I wanted to see the cost first.
What's more, for heaven. Uh, the last one is the appointments to the Paris boards. First one I have is the Tri-County D.
I'd like to keep that one.
Next is the One Ohio Recovery Foundation.
Where are we?
I'm sorry, we go.
I'm sorry. They could have went to vote everyone.
I have this one, one resolution.
Those are all on one resolution, but I didn't know if there was going to be any any discussion on that.
No.
One Ohio Recovery Foundation, Richard Martin. North Central Ohio Solid Waste District, this is one of mine.
Can you give me a word to what it is?
I think there's a, I don't know how many meetings.
Is it a quarter?
It's a quarterly meeting, regional waste, solid waste meeting.
I think, yeah, it's, um, Marysville.
Yes, so quarterly meeting in Marysville for region for solid waste market.
They move the ramble a little bit, but it's still.
Are they that far region?
I can't remember Flovey County.
Yeah, I think Union Logan Ship, they.
Madison.
There's no interest like.
Madison County Family Insurance First Council, that's your state.
Yes.
Bridges Community Action Partnership.
That was.
David Walton.
That was delegated to David last year.
Central Ohio Rural Planning Organization.
So that's Corpo, that is an optional, or that is one that that Mark has held for the last few years since its inception, I believe. So that is through Morpsey, the Mid Ohio Regional Planning Commission.
You don't have to appoint, it's up to you people.
And what's the regular area again? Is it corporate as well?
Um, I believe it's monthly.
And is, that's available through teams or?
I don't believe so. I don't think so.
It has to be.
It's a monthly meeting, what is it?
Uh, it's an engineer's office.
Where?
Engineer's office.
And is it a voting?
No, no, it's advisory.
Advisory Board.
I mean, it's something that you can delegate as well. You know, if it's something that you would like for me to attend, I can attend as soon as I can.
Your choice, if you don't want to.
You all, everybody on the board.
That's funny. But we can't like, doesn't mean I couldn't attend.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, they're all, they're all public meetings. So is that?
That's you.
That's me.
Okay.
Madison County Land Reutilization Corporation, the land.
I'm on that, so I can stay on. That's the only.
Madison County Emergency Food and Shelter Program, this is where I have.
Yeah, currently, um, sitting on that.
Madison County Port Authority. Madison County Employee Benefits Consortium, it's not Madison County, County Employee Benefits Consortium of Ohio.
So that's, uh, I've been your voting member for a long time, probably eight years now, but I, we do need to have a resolution.
Tom will be our designated, David will be our alternate.
County Risk Sharing Assembly.
Yeah, and that's one that I'm sitting on. I've been four years now. Will be an alternate.
Tom is the appointee, Dave is the alternate.
County Commissioner Association Representative, this is an optional as well.
That's baby.
That's one.
Local Emergency Planning Committee.
Yeah, that's one that I've sat on for twenty-four years.
Maybe twenty-five.
Maybe twenty-five years, actually.
That's all. Is there a team that you, yeah, that I said I would have, and I don't think I printed those off. I did it last night.
You sold that one there.
And I said I put it on there and I did it, and then I didn't put it on this one. CIC.
CIC and COYC.
I was going to do the CIC.
Any objections, Mr. Cal?
That works.
And the county youth, what's the smart?
Central Ohio.
Remember that was the one market for a long time, so once again, if you would like to.
Lovely quarterly, what does that mean?
Obviously, Mark has done that for so long, I want to get to it.
Yeah, I I think that is quarterly, but I can double check. I'm going to look for a location right now. It's at the facility, so. Marysville. Yeah, I see that's a three's quarterly. And so the early agenda I sent out links to all the different organizations up here for back to that, right? So in the beginning, you can click on it, at least get some basic information on what it is and what it does. But yeah, that is the Marysville.
You don't know how often?
Uh, I don't. I'm looking for members that. I don't think I was able to find, I can ask Mark.
Say, just shoot Mark that.
Yeah, but that that is the one secret now.
Can we do it next meeting?
No, I'm not objecting. I just want to make sure it's something that I can.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I suppose I could do it and then if I can't attend.
Yeah, you can send an alternate, send an alternate, yeah.
So that's odd.
This is a ceremony, right? This week, next week? So I'm your alternate.
So you'll, so you'll.
So Resolution for Urban Committee, the appointments to the Dallas boards, you're.
Good job, sir. Second. The first and the second, any extension, wants, who wants, roll call.
Mr. Shen.
Yes.
Chappers, Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
That's everything for the organizational meeting. Forty-five. Appreciate it. Is there any other business to come forward or?
Yeah. Take some items.
You want to give this one in real quick and then?
Yeah.
Go back.
I have first.
Try to draw a circle.
How you doing, Roger?
Doing all right.
Doing all right. Is there snow plow?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Roger was out yesterday, really diligently. He, he did a good job. It's the first time he used a new snow plow. We bought a a new snow plow, and then, well, really, we bought two. Uh, the smaller ones, a one-ton unit with a blade. And I don't have a CDL. So the discussion came about, Roger talked with me about it. One, it can be used in the cemetery, two, if we have intense snows, I could go out and lift up intersections.
Yeah.
With it, and you can keep hitting your little.
You guys don't have a person.
We did have.
Okay.
We did have, uh, and that person decided he retired. He was in his seventies. Would you say located someone else? And Roger said, hey, I'm willing to do it, but I think we're going to have to look at some young person. That's what. Yeah. I'd like to find a young man that's a farmer, always he has a CDL and.
Sure.
Isn't doing much in the winter time.
Couple years I can get you a retired worker.
Did you buy that?
I said in a couple years I can get you a retired worker.
Is that it?
Yeah, I have retired, retired.
Is he?
Yeah, he's, you say this is his last work. He'll say.
Yeah. I know you want to be here, we're capable with, capable of being here next week to talk about halls. Most of.
Let me record it so you can watch it later.
If you're excited.
I'm going to be with a lot of you, sending.
Yeah, I got her.
Doesn't time change.
Logging.
Free in the morning or something.
No way, Alan. Seven hours a day, so.
Well, I'd be.
Seven hours a day.
No, four thirty, yeah.
You said head.
Yeah.
So either here, three third theirs. I'm not.
Seven, seven hours?
Yeah, seven.
Okay.
Yeah, you guys, you guys are talking about twenty years, it's six weeks of vacation. I don't think I had six weeks of vacation. Every day is vacation for you.
Why do you all be eighty when I get to claim that? So it doesn't seem to fit in my picture either.
And these work it.
We never managed every other day. We didn't have, the girls, they're worse for us. We never, we never, we never stayed a vacation.
My dad always said, when I take rotation, I lose money. I, I, you know, the money stops, he's self-employed.
Yeah, you already discussed.
Yeah.
It doesn't happen if you ask the project. You know, we don't take a vacation.
Yeah.
We have one part here, we have one, but we don't take it. For example, if you sell your vending recordings.
Yeah, you know, the.
No question. Yeah, I was set.
That's nice.
It's so weird.
I mean, those are all. Uh, I've got a little strategic plan in mind. Myron, how are you doing?
Doing all right.
How's the jet going? I haven't heard much of that.
It's moving forward. That's some information I gave the prosecutor this morning. Hilliard seems very interested. And the council is on board now. And.
Day.
Yeah, and, uh, and I inquired with our planner and Tom Springs, our attorney. I said, would it be appropriate to make sure that the wording, you know, the tax, like, one community will give us credits if they're.
Right, like they work and live in one.
We want to make sure that the business district doesn't get eliminated first on that credit. That they, you know, and it does appear that the wording is set up like that. But I wanted approval from Nick. You know, to just say, yeah, he thinks that way too. But yeah, it looks like we're moving forward. We're also talking with Cricker.
With the Cricker folks.
Karen.
Karen.
You're Karen and Karen.
And I think there will be other people that will come on board in the. King and Township has reached out, they're looking at, we're reviewing that two weeks from last night. Uh, because King and Township is really interested in knowing about TMS. Because the Villasland City has acquired them, annexing out the prices. And their argument was, this guy, John Swayne, you were referring.
Yeah.
You heard about that?
A little bit, yes.
Yes. Uh, and my rebuttal to that is when, hold it, John has already said, we will have it as we get there.
Yes.
In the air. And that's redundant. You know. So they are very interested because they want to protect their township just like we try.
Yeah. Right now, you can have six seats.
And I think the answer is advantageous for us as a property to protect the eastern border.
The eastern.
Of the county.
Western, eastern, yeah.
What's western, you know, what's east?
Yeah, I was just trying to think what makes sense as a demarcation. To.
So, and Hilliard was, is more interested in from the standpoint of for two things, or three things, really. One, they have a hard time expanding, it would be. Because Columbus.
Yeah, they're pretty much surrounded.
If we want to expand and develop, Columbus can stop it because Columbus provides. So, uh, their, their thought pattern is, can we give up a partnership for parks, recreation? Uh, and otherwise, then this would be revenue sharing in some regards, uh, as well as they, they offered an opportunity that, in which we do have, uh, fiber optics, but they think theirs is more cost-effective.
Their fiber?
Yeah, that they're offering.
Do they know that we'll have fiber there and to your building?
I think they do, but that was.
Dwayne, Dwayne's part of, Dwayne's part, Dwayne Powell.
But that's just something else that they all.
It's their report. It is their report.
Yeah.
So.
I would be, I would be really interested to know how they would be more competitive than what we would be or are.
Well, I think they're looking at just expanding that base, so.
Well, yeah, Dwayne has always been interested in expanding their.
So Dwayne's really interested there. See, I wasn't even aware of that. Yeah. That's good, it's something for us to discuss.
Yeah.
But, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, Hilliard, you know.
Sure, no, it seems like there's multiple benefits to both communities.
Yeah.
But on, on, and I don't want to keep ringing the bell on the fiber stuff, but, um, yeah, I would. I mean, certainly there could be a connection there without a doubt, you know.
Well, and, and if it isn't, and that is a killer for the agreement.
Yeah.
We don't have to.
It's not against you on that.
No, it's not against you on that.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so, but.
Okay, very good. Let's continue the conversation. Mr. Shen, you have a few items.
Yeah, thank you very much. So one was the Ohio Chaper. So I just wanted to bring that for consideration. I had enough time to speak with the auditor. She said she thought that would be very doable on her end. I understand it spans the gamut as far as how much information counties provide. But I just, I wanted to bridge the subject for, to gauge interest and feasibility and all that, so.
I mean, you had, when you first came in, you brought it down.
Yeah, I knew it.
I don't know why I knew it.
Yeah, I did it. Yeah, I brought it up when I first started.
Not only was there, it was more, wherever we could turn off. There's nothing to it here.
Yeah, so any thoughts on how we go about it? Is it, is it, does the auditor's office need to initiate it to?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there would be substantial work that I think we've done in the other percent to do that.
I would make a suggestion.
What is that?
To allow me to spearhead it to make sure it's done.
Oh, that's fine, yeah, but if it don't.
I mean, I just.
I mean, I know it's gonna take some. It's gonna take work, it's gonna take work on their part.
Absolutely, it'll take work on their part. It'll take more work on their part than on my part. Absolutely. It'll take work on their part. It'll take more work on their part than on my part, but you also understand how things, how quickly things move.
State audit, like state pressures.
State pressures.
So can we have a representative potentially come in?
Oh, sure. And we, and we have in the past.
Absolutely. So since we're bringing it up.
Yeah, but I, what, the way I'm looking at it is from a project manager's standpoint. Like I'm gonna set goals and deadlines and bump the auditor's office and keep them on track to meet certain schedules to get this thing done. Because I feel if you leave it up to them to do. It's going to be bad all over again.
Absolutely. Then at least keep the, keep the beat to the fire.
So you can just keep us aggressive if what's needed and, yeah, okay. The newsletter, I know a while ago you had asked for input on topics and whatnot, any status update on.
Yeah, so we're close to being kind of.
This one's, yeah, we got one. We got, we got, we got finally reviewed last week, so we're gonna put it out this week.
Yeah, so I think one of the questions has been, what ways do you want to disseminate this newsletter? And do you want to mail it? Do you want to, um, make it certainly online? Right now it's certainly online.
Well, we do, we do.
In the subscription service.
Yeah, yeah, we have a list of probably about thirty people that when, when, when the first, when the first newsletter went out, how long ago that was, there was, it was sent out, I forget where the list came from, but it was a comprehensive list. It might come from the board of elections. Uh, went out to everybody and they were able to. Tim Hughes put on the newsletter, if you would like to receive this newsletter by mail, every time it comes out, go here, submit your, submit your information and we'll send it out to you. So that was done the first time, probably like a list of about thirty five people, I would say.
Yeah, first mail mail.
Yeah, first mail mail. And then there's also a list of emails, well.
Which is pretty minimal.
Yeah.
How much did it cost us to mail that? It's significant. It's, it's a few, was it four thousand?
It was, it was in the thousands.
Yeah, it was somewhere between four and five thousand.
I think it's at least five, yeah.
And that all depends on how many pages, the weight, that sort of thing, but typically I think it was, it was a four page newsletter.
Do you have the topics for this one? You said this one's already done. What, what were the?
Um, this one is biodigester.
Biodigester.
No, I think we have a solar update.
Yeah. Um, it was the demo dollars being put out.
Yeah, so demolition grant through the state of Ohio.
Yeah, let's see, hold on. And then it was recognition of, um.
Government services.
Transportation, and then the transport, right, recognition of government services, transportation, that Fayette County, Madison County ride, transportation program. Uh, numbers for that, biodigester, and then state funding for site, uh, for site.
So I would imagine each of us would want to sign up for it, I imagine.
Yeah.
So has that happened yet?
Uh, we sent it to the commissioners when we had the final draft. We don't really go through a formal. Um, it's kind of like, hey, if you want to change something, let me know, and if not, it's the date we're gonna send it out. Uh, but it's, it would be up to you guys how you want to handle that in the future.
I wouldn't think it needs to be formal. I just would like to be able to have that opportunity.
Sure.
Since I assume my name is gonna be on, uh.
Right, yes. Yeah, I'm right on the right hand side of the commissioners and some contact information. And we provide that, um, going into the next newsletter, we give the opportunity for other elected officials in the department that's provide information on what's going on. Like so, um, training overview from the auditor's office, they provided information at one point in time. Tax collection from the treasurer's office, that sort of thing, so. Um, but a lot of times we're, we're really grasping for information. There, there's not too many people worth coming with, with things. The fact is they're trying to hide anything. I just, maybe they feel it's really not that important or not that many people are interested in it, so.
Sure, sure. I, I do see value in one, one time a year mailing out. Um, I know it's an expense, you said four, five thousand. I, I just, I do see that value. We don't have paper, obviously, anymore. It's something I, I've heard quite a bit that people appreciate the newsletter, they appreciate getting it. I know not a lot of people signed up, you said, to receive it mail, but that doesn't, to me, indicate that there's no interest. It just means that they either didn't see it or didn't do it.
Just throw it away. So years ago, years ago, you had Ohio State. Do a survey for us. Kind of time, and it wasn't that expensive if I remember. The survey they sell? No, the Ohio State's, they charge very little, but that was forged based for on surveys and statistics. We paid the mailing. Right, the mailing costs. Right. At that point in time, it was like three, thirty seven hundred, thirty eight hundred. That then has increased due to postage. But the expert gave us information, right? So could that expert, at their minimal fee, which I don't even know what it would be now, do a survey to see how many people actually want, um, a mail? With a survey that's simple, that's something I can do. You, you follow what mine, you know, let's, let's, I guess let's give an idea if we can, of how many people are really interested in this, you know? You know, if you get three people and say, oh yeah, definitely, I know it's gonna be more than three, but you know, last time about thirty five. So it's been four thousand dollars or five thousand, probably now, that's, I think, uh, stamps went up too. So to benefit, I just need to spend the kind of money.
Yeah, I understand. And I'm not opposed to trying to solicit feedback.
That's all I need. If we can solicit feedback and it's really, really, you know, yeah, and we want it, like. But anyway, I know that, uh, that's good. That's what, that's what we need to do. But we do have other avenues to get information on, you know, I don't know that, the Facebook deal, I don't know why we can't look more on that, more and more. Including this newsletter. Well, we do, we do. We put out a fair amount. How many people are signed up that don't have Facebook?
Uh, it's, I think three. I don't know if I can look real quick. Yeah, it's, yeah.
About forty four thousand, forty six thousand.
I know.
I'm happy to put morale, it's, um.
I mean, you should, you should bring it to us in some version, you know.
I mean, right now it's just, please now, like meetings change.
Seven hundred and thirty six.
Seven hundred and thirty six. Yeah, that was close, right number. Yeah, what about, you know, like snack program and information, it's stuff that people forward us that would be considered valuable information to the, to the community. But we can, we can do a survey, we can do an online survey, extremely easy. If you want to do a mail in survey, we can do that. Um, question would be if you want to have a, you know, self addressed, pay postage, envelope go out with that survey. So. Well, I'm thinking like on that Facebook thing, you could even put a schedule, uh, meeting schedule, you could sort of, you know, can you post amendments? No, I've got Microsoft forms like they want in literally five minutes.
I mean, you can post back to the, everything's on the website. I don't have to double work, but you post links back to, and then it's linked back to the.
For somebody that just opens it up and wants to look at what they have to do without doing any more.
One, bring one plate, I mean, they take one plate to take it, but I could do, argue it, but the same.
No, I'm not either.
It's pretty easy to get to our website. It has all of this information.
Yeah, and I think that's, like, those people, yes. You know, go through that, because they're probably already getting the newsletter online. Are you trying to target an audience that doesn't necessarily use the web?
I, I know that a lot, a lot of people use Facebook, okay, and they can share.
Yeah, it's just.
So the information gets multiplied by a hundred fold. So putting information on something like that, me personally, I don't, I don't, don't want to do none of that.
Yeah, that, that's the least likely on Facebook when, when it comes out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But even, even other information that we could add, I mean, it doesn't cost anything, it's there, load it up. So if you want to look at it, let, let them look at it.
Do you recall? I don't know how many, many months ago it was, but I had the two companies come in. Uh, they did basically a Teams meeting with us. They were survey companies, social media companies, that sort of thing. That game survey, you know, they, we developed those surveys, put it out there, have all the different criteria, the metrics and everything else, to provide certain information. And it would hit all social media platforms, um, so we could take a look at that as well, but.
That was like thirty thousand dollars and stuff, wasn't it?
Um, yeah, I, I was thinking it was around like ten.
I'm thinking something we could do that don't cost us any money.
Well, a simple form of, do you want this mailed to you or not? I can do it in five minutes for free. But I feel, and this is my opinion.
We could get the same result. Maybe we get another thirty people. Yeah, we got thirty last week, and then you get thirty new people.
That's like, at least worth, worth going. I mean, whatever you tell me, it's worth, you know, for five thousand dollars to get thirty new people. No, for those people that want it.
Yeah, thirty new people, yeah.
That's not by test.
I, but I thought you were saying, make a survey to those people to see if they want it mailed.
So like, well, we already did that once. You could put the survey on, on the seven hundred people that you have for your Facebook, right? Yeah, what I'm saying is if I get online to fill out a survey, I'm probably, um, have the technological ability just to go to the online.
Yeah, I think if we post, if you post a survey on Facebook, I could do, get two people to fill out.
Yeah, because they're already online and everything else. Unless I'm recruiting into this too much, it's what about the people that aren't online? You know, your only option there is mail. Well, I get you, but even my mother-in-law doesn't speak hardly any English, plays with it, so.
Yeah, and I, I don't interpret the number of the thirty respondents who said, what did, what did they say? We don't want it mailed.
No, they do, they do thirty.
They want it mailed, only thirty fill out the form.
Okay, so thirty, yeah, I don't interpret that to mean only thirty in the county. If you ask them the question.
No, I agree with you. Yeah, it makes sense. It's other people that appreciate having it mailed for them to fill out the form.
They didn't fill out the form, they didn't, right, and that's what most people I think do and say, I'm not gonna bother with that. But I appreciate it.
But most of the, they did fill out the form.
Correct, correct, so that's.
So I think there's something to be said for mailing out ones here. I think that's something we should certainly should consider later in the year.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate that.
Exactly.
Like, do like a year in review. Sorry, didn't even hear.
Yeah, a year in review or some of these topics that we know people want to hear about. You know, we know they want to hear about a solar, you know, they want to hear about the biodigester, so. Um, if this newsletter has that, it's worth considering, but we'll have more updates later in the year, I'm sure, on all those issues, so. So I'll leave that there for now. Thanks for entertaining. I just want to state for the record for constituents who have contacted me, because I've heard from a number of people about the organic farm on the corner of one forty two, where I live on Breck Road. I've had neighbors and had many constituents call and express concern. There's been loose animals, there's, there's all sorts of problems. Now, I, I understand that on December eighteenth, a letter was, was issued with possible zoning violations, so I'm asked to receive that letter, so Dennis is gonna give that to me. I just wanted to state that. The courthouse closing policy, so we ran into yesterday. Got a call from, from Rob, and my understanding is if we're at a level two before the day begins, we have the authority to decide whether or not to close. Is there anything further in that policy? What, what about a level three?
Well, level three, we're automatically.
We're automatically closed?
Yeah, that's. Well, not, not a three, it only means emergency vehicles should be on the ground.
And there's no action that needs to be taken, or that happens automatically.
It, but it includes essential personnel.
Yeah.
Essential personnel, so. And then you have the, the individual, uh, department chair that can shut it down without our permission. You know, so level three, we would close, except for essential personnel.
Okay, and that happens automatically, so you don't need to reach the commissioners to do that.
Right, yeah.
And that says.
But I would always let you know before.
You should.
Put that information.
But you're not waiting to, to get.
No, the, the level two is.
It's that gray area.
It's that gray area.
So that's, yeah, that's what I was wondering, if, if there's anything to, to button it up so that if you don't have that situation of gray area, but probably not because by definition, level two is gray.
Yeah, that's another discretion.
Okay, um, the strategic and, and comprehensive plan. So the strategic plan was last updated in twenty twenty four. I don't know if that was a substantive update, but it just sent me that.
That was the first endeavor.
Of updating?
Of.
Of creating.
Yeah, creating one, so that was, okay. Was it actually passed in twenty twenty four? Was it passed previously and updated in twenty twenty four?
Um, that was twenty three.
Twenty three, twenty three or twenty.
It was in creating. But that doesn't have any teeth, more.
It's a, it's a guided document, it's a, it's a strategic plan.
Okay, because the document was updated in twenty four, so I assume some, some change was made, and I'm not sure what it is. The reason I'm bringing it up is because I'm, I'm thinking that we should update the comprehensive plan.
We are.
But very soon. The reason I say that, even before, because I realize it's going to be a big process, right, to update the comprehensive plan.
Correct, yeah.
Some of the information in there on solar, um, I think we would want to urgently address. Uh, and it, it, there's some cognitive dissonance between what's in there versus what we've now filed with this great court.
Because if our resolution override the comp plan. Yeah, comp plan has no teeth. It's, it's a guided document. It's all solar. It's, it's more than clear. I think it's crystal clear. It's a guided document.
Let me back up just for a second real quick. So the economic development strategic plan was finished in twenty twenty three, but we had an issue with the way people were reading the document and the maps and getting confused with the comp plan. So we moved some maps around to make it a little bit easier. That's when it was, um, in twenty twenty four is when we did that. But the information itself didn't change.
You're talking about on the strategic.
On the strategic plan, so.
So this map that.
Yeah, yeah. It was like, well, you said that, um, you know, this is slated to become, um.
Yeah, I think we just.
Commercial, and it was like, no, this is a, um, a economic development.
It's, it's only one of the.
Priority.
Right, with the, there was some talks about.
Remember there were.
Large, right, and then, and then, and then the mega site kind of discussion as well. Yeah, I think there were just some clarifying parts that we made that down.
Yeah, and hence that may change from twenty twenty.
In the comp plan, just our vision, there's nothing in stuff. Yeah, it's not a, it's a guide.
You don't, you don't have to follow any. So we are in the process right now of updating.
We've already discussed.
The comp plan. So I'm scheduled to speak at the Temple Trustees Association on Monday night to start that process. And, and David and Dennis is, Dennis is working on that as well, but we're giving them the heads up. We're going to ask for meetings with all the Temple Trustees, go in, present the data, ask for changes, that sort of thing. And then whatever your guidance is on changing that document, like you and I talked about taking the almost pro-solar sheet out of that entirely and shake, flipping that around one hundred and eighty degrees. And to Chris's point, that it is, it is no longer desirable, uh, used by any county.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, so I guess all I'm saying is I'm wondering if we can simply remove those pages now. Just to get them out of there, because it just, why have a defunct part of the document? You know, I know you say it doesn't have any teeth, but is there?
Well, the comp plan does have teeth. The, the strategic plan doesn't have any teeth. It's just a guiding document. Comp plan does have teeth.
Okay, and see, that's, that's, I mean, if I'm, if I'm an attorney for the other side.
We, we're.
Yeah, the comp, the comp plan has no teeth now, but we passed a resolution, doesn't it? It's how many alternative, you know, it's done, restricted areas of that void.
Or solar.
The, the land use, the future land use is where.
The teeth are at.
The teeth are at. The document itself can be amended, but to their point, the resolutions that have been passed make that obsolete. So to your point, going in and moving that, it doesn't seem like there'd be a problem doing that. Um, the actual update, the. Doesn't seem like there'd be a problem doing that, um, the actual update, the teeth part of the document is, that's where the process comes in, or Dennis and I, or the engaging township chief.
Yeah, that's what really matters, yeah, the land use plan, that's what really matters, I mean, that's the guiding. For zones. Guiding piece of that document for zoning is the land use plan, and the landings plan doesn't refer to solar.
Right, so removing that, I mean, yes, I can, but it's, it's really not, right, it's just a.
So I see two options, you could amend the current comp plan, remove the solar, and amend it by resolution, or you can wait six months and wow, anyone. In front of you, where that language has been removed, we don't anticipate a lot of changes from the previous complaints to the new comp plan.
And then the six months, is that, where does that timeframe come from, is that just what you're estimating?
I'm just estimating based on, if, if we go through the process that we did in the past, which is stakeholder order meetings, uh, we did three stakeholder meetings, uh, elected officials, business community.
No, that's still your mix come up, that was it.
That's the key, okay, okay.
So the, with the three months is basically Dennis and I have kind of, that's I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Dennis and I, we're next, probably two and a half months, due to meeting, the different townships' meeting times. Are, we're set to go and engage, whether it be dual or one, you know, one take, you know, divided concrete, different townships to update that map and provide the input into the concrete, or into the conference plan. So that's why we're talking probably two and a half months of engagement, and then, I don't kind of know, digesting and processing of everything, and taking three or so months to do that, and. My hope, to Rob's point, June, July, we should get that updated, I don't want to wait a whole year to do that, that's not.
So after we have our meetings with the township trustees, I think it, it's smart to still have, um, stakeholder meetings, now, one of those being the public, which is one that we typically do. Um, and we bring all that information together and fit it into that document, working with you guys, making changes that you see fit, and then eventually you pass a resolution to accept that comprehensive plan.
So, so at this time, somebody could look at the comp plan, the old comp plan, they still cannot, when you have solar because of the resolutions that we have passed.
Understand, I, I still think it's no hard and visual.
There's no hurry getting it out, so if you have, kind of the resolution that, that we can remove it, then do it.
Okay, that's easy enough.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and then, um.
So just so I'm clear, then, we're, we're going to take the solar out of the current comp plan, amend it, and we're going to pass a resolution accepting the amended, um, comprehensive.
Does that have to go through all three of those boards, the regional planning, he can submit?
Uh, I don't think so.
That's a good question.
I don't, I don't think so, that's something I can only thank you two weeks, it's a double check.
That's part of the, that's part of, thank you, because that's part of it too, is why it's, it's typically the comprehensive plan, I think, per.
Is that in code?
I don't, I don't know, but. But just look at it, doesn't it? Yeah, because that, that's a three-month process.
As far as.
Overprotective now, that's that, that's ours, it's taken care of, it was, it's taken care of.
And it has to get a few three-month progress, we're going to prob, think, process, we're going to pay money for that too, through all the publications and mailing out, that's something that goes out too.
Correct.
And it's just a matter of, sorry, stretching it another three months.
Yeah, but that's the process, and that's.
It's almost one, it's almost just go through the process one time, yeah.
But if we, if we can do it by a simple resolution, that's, that's what I would be interested in, if not, then.
Because the, because the language that is in the comp plan. As it currently stands, doesn't really have any bearing on anything, so that's why I'm saying, I don't think you would have to go through all those boards. But if there is something on the underby's code, the states that have, I proved here, 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 then that's a different, we're in a different boat.
Correct.
So, and we'll find that out in, in two weeks, we'll have that in front of you, it could be a simple process, or maybe a little more convoluted process, if it's a convoluted process, then maybe just wait, and we, we try to get the comp plan done as fast as.
We, yeah, we appreciate you on that, so, um, the input from the public, um, for the update to the comprehensive plan, that would be something that I could see going in the newsletter and email out, if we were going to do that, so. What's the timeline of that, I mean, if we've got a newsletter that's getting ready to be published?
Well, we can publish them as often and as many as you like, um, right now, we're just doing quarterly or monthly.
It's, it's typically bimonthly.
Bimonthly, yeah, so we can do them as often as you like, um.
I just wonder, given the timeframe of six months, I just wonder if it makes sense to, to hold off a week, two weeks on that, to get information from public input. To be able to get that out sooner rather than later.
I mean, we could all, I mean, that's pretty flexible, I mean, so we could, we could work to get a special newsletter out too, if we need to, you're talking about mailing though, correct, or are you talking about a, a dual made guy?
We, you know, the conversation was, we may be interested in doing one mailing a year, and I'm just saying, if, if one of the topics is the public's input into the comprehensive plan update. That seems like a, a noble.
So you're saying put that in there now, and then some of the others is.
That's, that's what I'm reasoning for, I'm putting on, I see merit to that.
It's easy for us to do.
I see the potential of that.
Yeah, we can definitely hold off on the newsletter, include that information, and that, since you brought that up, and since Tommy brought up the, um, you know, Ohio State map survey, is that something that you would like to. See again going into this comprehensive land use plan, another survey to engage the temperature of the public, um, you know, whether desires are, I can send you a copy of those, those questions. You know, and the results as well, to kind of give you an idea of the last two surveys, and whether I want to do that again, to help guide the decision-making process in the comp plan.
Well, I would say this about the comp plan, as you both have mentioned, you and David have both mentioned, this is not a substantial update, I mean, the comprehensive plan is not going to change that much from what we did, we hired MKS today, a reputable planner. Went through a year-long, maybe an eighteen-month-long process to develop one of the best comprehensive plans this county has ever developed. We're not going to make substantial changes to that comprehensive plan, but this is a lot of time and energy and money for something that we spent months and months and months, it's dollars. And, and soliciting public input, soliciting input from township trustees, we've already done all that, and we just did it two years ago. I think a lot of the major changes. Those opinions haven't changed that much, and we're not going to make that many changes to the comprehensive plan, and probably public opinion hasn't shifted a lot in, in a year and a half, two years, since we completed that comprehensive one. And I think for the land use, I mean, you have probably four, maybe five townships that are going to see.
Some changes.
Yeah, ones behind us, or then have, you know, Kane and.
Jefferson.
Jefferson, Deer Creek, and I'll throw Somerford out there maybe, um.
Maybe, yeah, I'd see four townships maybe changing, the other ten probably, or nine, or maybe the seventh. Did you say Somerford?
Somerford, yeah.
So they're, have they, did they do their own comprehensive?
They, they, they follow, they, they, they follow, they follow ours unless they want to deviate.
Well, they talked about doing their own.
Right, but I think they follow process, they follow process. But yeah, I, 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 I think we, we went through an exhaustive process last time to update the comprehensive plan, yes, a lot of time, a lot of money, I don't know that we need to go through that same exhaustive process. I mean, for the solicit feedback, I believe I'm wrong, but we, we endeavored for eighteen months to solicit a lot of feedback, a lot of input, a lot of time, when we never put it in that comprehensive plan, I don't think this comprehensive plan will need to have that many changes to it. Anything else?
Well, I, I do, but, well, I can put in there.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right, well, we'll leave, we'll leave that there for now, um, the county comp plan, I just was wondering if there was a resolution to that, it's probably not urgent, we can get that out.
As far as the health benefits gap?
Correct.
There is a resolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's, what's the resolution?
Well, basically, at the end of the calendar year, going into the next year, um, we're presented with, um, packages through SEPCO.
I'm sorry, we're, that's not what I'm talking, I'm talking about the, the, the policy, uh, for the employee not being covered.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The engineer's request, that.
Right, right.
So there, there's, basically, just what the policy manual states right now.
Okay.
Which is thirty days after the, you know.
One.
So in your case, it's like two months.
Two months, right, so it's thirty days after the first of the month, so if you started in mid-month, someone's potentially going two months, you know, don't care fully, but. That is something to consider, I mean, you've got someone without coverage for, not one month, two months, yeah, probably in most cases, because unless that person started the first version, you know, so.
And Steve is looking into.
That's it, we're looking into amending the policy, we don't, we don't.
Yes.
Okay, so that's already been looked into at the test.
But it'll be something that you guys will have to pass, and then one that we'll have to send out on SEPCO. Now, the auditor had some, some issues with it, took it over.
Okay, um, the, the meeting recordings, can we make them archived and available?
We can, yeah, it's not an issue, but easily, that's easy enough.
I can start today?
No, easy enough, boom, excellent.
I guess that's sufficient for now.
There we go.
Any other business, Sheriff, do you have anything, anybody else?
I don't think Sheriff's, so.
We used to. Move to a juror.
Um, it, it's really get my, my drive, uh.
He's not listening to Madonna.
I see some trees on the bike.
So, I'll show you how to.
Hi, John.
I'll show you how to, uh, do the. With organs.
Right now, where are you going? Pray for me, that's what you.
All right, we'll see, uh, next two weeks.
We'll talk soon.
Okay. Yeah.
I mean, this, this, the thing on the wall.
Yeah, did you call?
It was working last time that I came.
Oh, wait, that's.
Turn that damn thing off.
Yes, no.
Okay.
Well, it says any restarting.
It's still.